I'd like to call the meeting to order and thank everyone for their attendance. Look forward to a very good meeting and hopefully one that we get out of very early. No, I've got a prediction that Vice Mayor cannot do anything but come up with a totally consistent agenda, I'm feeling. Anyway, we will start. Emilia, would you like to make the introduction on the restoration of the eastern branch of the Elizabeth River?
Good afternoon to everyone and my fellow council members. If you remember, we did an earlier presentation and were given the charge by the mayor to go forth and do good. So we formed an advisory committee and I will ask Marjorie to come up in a minute and go through the presentation. As you can see, we did a lot of walk to talk. We also have one of our committee members to my right, Murray Hill, if you'll give your hands.
Happy to have you.
Okay, and Marjorie, if you could come forward to do our presentation.
Marjorie, we're glad to have you.
Thank you for having me back and I want to thank the councilwoman here for being our chair. She did a great job. She's actually, as you can see, out on the river with the kids picking up trash and she really did a hands-on job with this thing.
Thank you. And we forgot Clay.
Clay Burnick was also a valued member.
Clay, thank you for your help.
You're welcome, sir.
So, we came to you in February and asked you to consider ways that the city of Virginia Beach could help with the eastern branch of the Elizabeth River. Because we have a new community-wide plan to clean up the eastern branch. It goes through three cities, Chesapeake, Virginia Beach, and Norfolk. And it's kind of been the lost, forgotten part of the Elizabeth River because it's hard to see unless you're going over a bridge and you look down real quick. So for that reason and other reasons, it's got some pretty low water quality scores that we're trying very hard to work on. And appreciate this chance to recommend how the city could play its part. And this was a 25-member committee and you have the recommendations or report in your packet. They met and went on at least three field trips that I know of and very excited to bring these to you today. So, there's, I believe, eight recommendations. The first one's pretty simple, a no-brainer, to highlight the eastern branch and its ecosystem and its great history with the city in your already-funded Interpretation Trail in Kempsville. Part of elevating the eastern branch in the public's mind would be an idea to rename part of the 264 Expressway as the Eastern Branch Freeway. This is after the example of the Western Branch Freeway in Portsmouth, which is named for that part of the Elizabeth River. Just trying to think of creative ways to raise the profile of the eastern branch of the Elizabeth River. Recommendation three is to increase public access. So you're looking at a picture of Carol Ann Farms Park, which is actually one of the very few places where the public can get out on the eastern branch of the Elizabeth River. And we're really delighted, there's Barbara Duke, she was also a valued member of our team, and delighted to know that possibly the draft revision of the outdoors plan includes a special focus on the eastern branch and how to get people out there appreciating and enjoying the eastern branch of the Elizabeth River. That'll be a real milestone for this effort. So to consider adding kayak launches at some existing city parks on the eastern branch. And the committee that went out and did a field trip, or several field trips, felt like the best access could be 8.8 acres that are for sale on Normandy Avenue, the dead end of Normandy Avenue, because the water's really close to the road there, so you don't have to carry your kayak for miles and miles and through wetlands and all that. And it's very reasonably priced, so we're not asking this council to buy that property. Elizabeth River Project is pursuing a state grant and some other funding. It's 8.8 acres, but most of that is wetlands and it floods really severely. So it's not particularly developable, not for much of anything unless it's on stilts and small. So we think that a park is a great use of that site.
What are they asking for?
$295,000, but Elizabeth River Project is raising that from grants and donations.
Great.
It's great habitat, it's a very diverse site for the plants that are there, everything from sassafras to oaks to pines. We saw a lot of wildlife on our visit. It also has a stormwater outfall that seems to drain a significant area that could be improved to meet some of your regulatory requirements for treating runoff. And so what we're, what the committee is recommending is Elizabeth River Project pursued this funding to purchase this property and the city consider accepting donation of the land for a small neighborhood park with a kayak launch as resources become available, recognizing that the kayak launch is not yet budgeted. Recommendation four, Elizabeth River Project has River Stars programs for businesses, schools, and homes. In Norfolk and Chesapeake, those cities contract with Elizabeth River Project for $100,000 a year for the on-the-ground documented results that our homes achieve on private property to meet TMDL requirements. Everything from supersized rain barrels that we install and measure the results, document and make sure they're maintained, to living shoreline plantings along the shore, to lawn makeovers and rain gardens. So we install these and would like for the city to consider that kind of contract with Elizabeth River Project following the model of Norfolk and Chesapeake. Recommendation five is, we do like the idea of the half-acre marsh that's been talked about at Princess Anne Fox Run Canal and historic Kempsville. And to consider additional habitat and public access at that former Long John Silver site, perhaps as a condition of any sale of that property. Restoring clean water. So the eastern branch of the Elizabeth River gets pretty low scores for water quality from bacteria, more than anything else. So some recommendations to support the efforts of the Green Ribbon Committee as it looks at possible stormwater utility credits, knowing that those aren't final yet from that committee, but just we do support that effort. And we're going to put together a regional task force to look at septic tanks and how much they might be influencing bacteria levels in the eastern branch. And finally, to partner with HRSD, they've done some really great source tracking elsewhere on the Elizabeth River, found some serious problems working with the other municipalities, and fixed them, and the bacteria levels dropped dramatically. So we really would like to see a similar effort, but we're not asking for any specific line item funding for that, just to participate at this point. So, why all these things? Because we think that the eastern branch is a great legacy for the next generation, and these are some students from Kemp's Landing and Oldo Nation who won an award with Councilman Ross Hammond for their efforts at Carol Ann Farms Park. So, thank you for considering these recommendations. We would love to have your support on them going forward.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Questions or comments? Yes, ma'am?
This is probably a Dave Hanson question.
Yes, ma'am.
Septic tanks, we don't have any house with septic tanks in that part of the city.
Help me out, Thomas.
Well, I'll have to check. We shouldn't have many, but we do have a inventory of them in the city, so we'll find out exactly how many are there.
We do, we understand that there are some. It's surprising, but they are.
I thought everybody was on city water.
There'd be some old ones that aren't active.
Are they, are they active or they're active? Do they have city water that they should be, or city sewer they should be tying into and they haven't?
Most of the septic tanks in that area are on properties that have been difficult to service from our sanitary sources.
Can't get the gravity, Ms. Wilson, needs a grinder punt to put it under pressure to push it there, maybe too long on a peninsula, all the easy, low-hanging fruits being grabbed. We're working great neck, we're working a lot of the peninsula areas to tackle what septic tanks we have left. Let's let Tom get us an inventory and we'll coordinate with Marjorie and we'll see what we can come up with.
It'd be nice to know, because I thought Little Neck was like the last, other than of course the rural area, but are there other septic tanks?
Surprisingly, we were looking at that piece of property next to Witch Duck 2, South and Norfolk Southern Railway, right there, across from the HRC, and we got in there and we were totally shocked what we found in there and we don't have a sanitary system in there. So we're busy trying to figure out how to put a major pump station in there to service that whole area. Remember, there's a major trailer park, there's three major industrial areas working in there, asphalt roads and some other ones, and then there's all the stuff that actually borders up close to Witch Duck, so it's crazy what we find sometimes.
Any other questions or comments? We thank you so very much. You want to wind it up, Emilia?
Yes, we thank you for considering this. This is very important because bringing over the Elizabeth River Project and the executive director and what all they've done in that area, she brought her staff along, including Princess Elizabeth along, and then the youth are so excited. I got to learn a lot about plants I shouldn't eat and plants I shouldn't touch, just going through. So that next generation, we want to keep the passion that they have for this and moving along so we can get our scores up.
Wonderful. And this is for you, for leading all that.
Oh, my goodness.
Great job.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
And if I could just, that's beautiful. That's for your leadership, thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just say that I know that Clay Burnick is retiring and he's been a huge help to us for 20 years. And so from Elizabeth River Project, I just want to make a special thanks to Clay. He's hiding behind the queue.
We thank Clay too for all the things he's done. Okay, John Earn is not here, and that being the case, I will go ahead and ask Jeffrey Hill to come forward.
They're coming through the door in a minute.
Okay. Jeff, come on.
Jeff, you got a clicker right here, let me get your chart out for you.
Okay. What I was getting ready to say, Jeff, is that John Earn just, you know, number one, he's a huge fan of the Patriotic Festival and then obviously doing things with you guys, it's just been spectacular. And he just wanted to, he was so proud of it, he wanted us to get an update on what was going on during Warrior Week and with the USO and everything else. So thanks so much for taking some time to come.
Well, Mayor, thanks for having me down here today and the rest of the city council members. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Jeff Hill and I think I was here 14 years ago was the last time I was here, Rosemary knows, when I was, you know, trying to convince the council we needed to Patriotic Festival. And things have changed a little bit since then, you know, I went, I got a different position with the USO and my responsibility is now, I run the region, and my region is the United States. So needless to say, I'm, like, we're building centers up in Alaska and in California and stuff like that, and so it keeps me a little bit occupied, so. But it's a few years ago, you know, Mike and John asked me to re-engage for various reasons and I'm ecstatic to be back involved, heavily involved, back here, back here in home. So if, let me see if I can figure this out, and then, all right. Now, again, I talked about Patriotic Festival and what we wanted to do, Patriotic Festival was becoming, it's a great event, but it was kind of becoming a concert on the beach. And Mike and John, back in 2013, asked me if I could, you know, start bringing some other things back, back towards the city. I was one of the guys that created, I don't know if you all heard of the Warrior Games? Prince Harry took it and made, you know, invented Invictus, but it's been on ESPN, but that's something we worked with the USOC, you know, the US Olympic Committee, and we had, did a bunch of neat things out there. And we wanted to bring some of that back to the beach, but what we wanted to do, Warrior Games is neat, but it's Paralympic activities, you know, it's archery and swimming and running and that kind of stuff. And what we decided to do is, well, Virginia Beach, you know, it's recreational outdoor activities. So what I did was I didn't want to, you know, bring in people from all of the US, I looked around locally and I looked at Kate, you know, Jay Redman with Combat Wounded Coalition, he does jumping for a purpose, and then Ken Hunt does Wave Warriors. There's a whole lot of neat things, so not just the facilities, there's a tremendous amount of good things that can be done here locally. So what we decided to do was use the USO's logo and kind of bring in a bunch of the smaller nonprofits, because, you know, we've all read lately some of the bigger ones kind of lost sight of, you know, their mission. But the local folks, like I'll bring Ken for example, he's just a great, great guy and everything they do is for the wounded, ill, and injured. And the neat part about this is we can involve the families also. And that's why the USO wanted to do this. So, that's what we did and we said, okay, we'll bring some nonprofits together and see what we can do. So, first year we brought eight together and then this year, we brought nine smaller nonprofits together, and these are the things that we get to do down here in Virginia Beach. And, you know, Ride and Recovery is an event usually starts, it starts up at the Vice President's House up in DC and ends down here. This year we did an adaptive golf, we, you know, we worked with Top Golf and had a great time up there. I'm a guy that really doesn't think much of golf, I didn't really like it that much at all, but I had a great time up there, you know, and it was a lot of fun.
I have swimmer, though. We thought I enjoyed golf, was there.
I don't like a game, no matter how good you're, you're still, you're still getting mad at it, you know, I'd rather do something else. Hey, John? And as you can see, you know, deep sea fishing, horseback riding, kayaking, skydiving, you got the Wave Warriors Surf Camp. And I don't know if you guys know, you know, there's a great water skiing lake right in the middle of Virginia Beach, over there in Witch Duck, and you know, and it took me about four days to finally found it when they first told me about it, but it's an incredible thing that they've set up over there. And this year we've also added an air rifle clinic, you know, for the wounded warrior adaptive sports. So total, you know, 575 wounded, wounded, ill, and injured, plus their family members. So it provides, there's nothing like it that the USO does, you know, throughout the world, essentially. It's a one-of-a-kind thing and it really highlights the great, you know, facilities and just things that Virginia Beach has to offer. And now we expand, these are athletes from all over the United States that come here, and the neat part about it is every year it grows and grows and grows because more and more people want to be part of it. So it's an easy sell, to say the least. One of the things we also do is the Military Village, and I know it was a couple of years ago, the police questioned me, everybody can see the upper right-hand corner of the picture of, that's an LCAC, Landing Craft Air Cushioned. And when I went to Mike the first time, I said I wanted to land one on the beach, he told me I was crazy, I said, well, maybe not, let's keep trying, and, you know, we convinced the hotel motel owners and stuff that it's going to be a neat thing, and it's really something special. If you ever have a chance to see those things laying on the beach, it's an impressive sight. But the village just shows what's behind the gates around here. You know, we have the LCAC, the SEAL teams come out, diving, EOD come out, and the Army got mad at us this year because there's not enough Army things, so they're going, we're going to try to get some tanks and things here next year also. So everybody, you know, a little inter-service rivalry never hurt anybody. So, all right. All right, also, I said every year, everything, it seems to grow every year because people find out about it and more and more people want to participate. One of the neater things, of course, I don't know if you all have ever seen the Marine Corps Silent Drill Batom, but that's really, really a special group of young gentlemen that perform that show, but they asked to come back and it's, what's neat is now, we're going to go down, I guess they have their selection down in Arizona in February, and they've asked us, the Commandant of the Marine Corps asked us to go down there and host that for them now, basically because of what we did for them here, while they were here. We also increased 17th Street, Patriotic Park, and then the Drill Batom added a couple of shows, Monster Energy brought down their FX motorcycle stunt guys, and I don't know if anybody's chance, we saw the Vietnam replica, the wall that heals, and setting it up on the beach was, you know, was challenging, but it was a really, really special backdrop for those guys too. So, now, next year, we talked about additions, there's other entities, but one to come is, this is a good time to talk about new additions, I brought, the USO is now partnering with Under Armour. It's a USO Fitness Connected by Under Armour because we're getting, you know, more and more into the health and wellness things, and that's really what this is about. So a couple of the key leaders from Under Armour were down here and we're in the process of figuring out what we're going to add with the Under Armour group for next year. Possibly something with the new, the new CrossFit facilities up there, we're not sure yet, but those guys are pretty inventive, so we'll take it from there. All right. And that's why I talked about the fitness part, you know, we've been doing the chalet for about 12 years, but the fitness areas we want to work on is nutrition, movement, sleep, and stress. And those are the biggies for the military that we, that the USO is really working hard, you know, to work on, thus, USO Fitness Connected by Under Armour. So instead of the food, instead of the regular snacks, we work with the Joint Culinary Institute, and what they do, they're the military members that train every Navy or every military chef, and it's up at Fort Lee. Well, the instructors come down and they, they prepare the meals for us. They got the Oceana, Farm Fresh gives us several thousand dollars worth of food coupons, so that's, we have, it's, it's a great shopping trip when you go in there with about $10,000 worth of freebies and just loading the carts, so. But they prepare healthy snacks for the men and women, you know, for our chalet. And, you know, this year, the governor came down with his family and spent Saturday night with us, and he's already sent me a letter and he's, he's already in, I guess, I guess we get to shove the governor, the mayor, and John out of planes next year. I told, I told you, I was told you stepped up, so I'm laying down the gauntlet now, Mayor.
I want to reiterate, the governor texted me when he was in that tent, saying he was loving every minute of it, and what a wonderful group of people and how proud he was to be associated with everyone.
Oh, they had a good, I was, they stayed for two and a half, three hours, they had a really, I don't, you know, his daughter was really enjoying the show, so he, you know, and so I didn't realize his son was, you know, currently, you know, second, you know, second lieutenant in the Marine Corps, was stationed right down here at Dam Neck, so we had some great conversations and he's already, his scheduler, I guess the next week, already made sure, made sure it was on the schedule, so he'll be, he'll be in the chalet with us next year. And of course, everybody here is always invited to our chalet, it's a neat, it's where the wounded, ill, and injured, we try to treat them as special as we possibly can, and they absolutely love it here. So, so anyway, that's, that's part of our, our health and fitness program that we're trying to do and just kind of show the highlights of Virginia Beach. Okay, costs. We did it, you know, I did it, any businessman would probably laugh at me how we started it, was, two years ago was, you know, we raised more money, we spent more money, you know, we spent it down to about zero every year. And every year it's gone up, 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 and this only includes my costs. And fortunately, the people in Virginia Beach, you know, we have the cash outlay, but then the additional in-kind donation, it's, you know, quarter million dollars now, but that doesn't include, like, Ken Hunt pays for all the Wave Warriors stuff, you know, he raised, you know, Jay Redman pays for all the parachuting, et cetera, et cetera. So all these independent nonprofits pay their own way. I call it plug and play, I mean, I say, I invite you to come down, but we, you know, we do the overarching things as far as the, you know, the media, the food, you know, every, you know, the logistics, all that part. And what's good is, people always ask, you know, well, how much goes to admin, how much goes to this? Every single dime goes right back into Warrior Week. You know, the USO raises money throughout the world, you know, and throughout the US, but here locally, this is mainly local sponsorships. And it's easy to say, hey, if you give us more money, we'll do, we'll either bring in more wounded, ill, and injured or we'll do more for them, you know, and that's our objective, what we do with it. And the city's been kind enough to give us a little jumpstart for next year too, so that'll, every bit helps and I can, I can guarantee you right here that every cent goes right back to the men and women that have served the country. And this is a lot of words, but basically says we got a lot of media, those television, radio, print, and social media is huge with all that stuff. You know, so all this generation is using texting, et cetera, et cetera, and, you know, and Facebook, et cetera, so we have a large amount of that, so it's, a lot of that is, you know, getting the word out about how great Virginia Beach is. So, and that's, it's real short and sweet, but I just, it's really just a thank you. We put a picture book together for you, it's, it's just for yours to take and we give that, we give back to our sponsors and stuff, but it captures some of the highlights of, of the week. I mean, you'll see Tyler Southern, you know, parachuting, he's got, he has one limb, you know, and, you know, the very first year was a neat story, a young lady, Mary, she was an EOD tech for the Air Force and while working on a IED, she lost both arms. And then, that wasn't enough, she got breast cancer immediately after that. So anyway, she has since then gotten married to a great-looking guy and she parachuted in a Wonder Woman outfit, you know, cape and all, you know, and her boots and her big star thing, so, I mean, that's the kind of stuff, you know, that we're able to do here in Virginia Beach. And it's, it's great because I have to do a lot of stuff across the US, but it's, I'm just always grateful for Mike and John to have asked me to come back to do it because we're having a blast with it. And, I mean, you know, cities throughout the country now are trying to emulate it, but it's really challenging because everything's here. And just, you know, the attitude, you know, the local nonprofits that have come together and just, you know, everything that's here in the beach is just tremendous, and I don't know if I can do it any other location. We've had other people from, from San Diego come out and look at different things, people in Colorado, but it's just a good mixture. And we, you know, we anchor it to the Patriotic Fest, it's a nice thing to, you know, to have the nice entertainment and put the chalet with it and to show that the neat things, but hey, you're standing on the sand, well, in this case, the decking, you know, like the decking is the same decking we use in Southwest Asia, a company called Drash gives it to us. You know, it's the same things they use in the, in the operating bases over there in Afghanistan and Iraq, so. But enables the wheelchairs to roll around freely and really enjoy stuff. So that's really all it is, I'm not asking for anything, it's, other than just, you know, the police, the fire, the city council, Mike and the CBB, it's just tremendous to work with. It's always, it's home cooking for me, it's always good to come back and do it. And if there's any interest, if you have any other, other entities that are interested, the more the merrier, and hopefully next year we'll even do more and we'll see what Under Armour wants to come in and do and make it bigger and better. So, so that's, that's really about it, Mayor, that's, it's a neat thing.
Thank you again for everything, John. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate the counsel, I know this is a repeat for many of us, at least in terms of the context of it all, but, you know, as Jeff alluded to, I mean, this is something that has grown tremendously, 575 this year, and I think that last year we were like 450.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, that's a pretty marked increase year after year. And, you know, I remember when Jeff and Mike first approached me about this several years ago, of course I was very supportive of it, but I'd had no idea this was going to be a one-year, that we were going to do it and be done, and I'm happy to say that that has not been the case and that, you know, when you're really down there with these men and women and seeing how much they're enjoying our city, it's, it gives you an awful lot of pride and I'm excited for what they've done. I will also say that, you know, it's really important that we do do this every single year and maintain that consistency. And a lot of that is because, you know, a lot of these events that we're doing are things that, you know, people that are completely healthy and aren't suffering from a traumatic injury are maybe a little hesitant to do. I mean, people going surfing for the first time, it's, it's not always an easy thing to do.
Well, I mean, you can look in your picture book, there's a guy with no arms surfing, you know, I can't do it with all my limbs.
But the point is that when you do it every year, the word gets out to that community that not only is Virginia Beach doing this and creating a fun environment, but they're creating a safe environment and that they're actually meeting whatever those special needs are of those particular personnel when they, when they come in, whether it's an extra flotation device or, you know, making sure that you've got, you know, plenty of people there to help you, or even, even just the ability to get you cool on the beach, you know, during the day. But, I mean, those are the types of things that, as we build this year after year and we get that reputation, that the wounded, injured community, you know, not only appreciates it, but they embrace it, and obviously you're seeing an awful lot more people participate. And, you know, we do an awful lot of really neat and good things at this council, but this is, this is one of the events that I'm the most proud of, and when you, when you're down there, you, you really, you sense it, I mean, it's palpable. And I thank you, Jeff, for all that you do and.
Oh, it's a blast.
And I will tell you this too, is that, you know, when Jeff and Mike and I got together originally, we, we had originally envisioned it was going to be this week-long event, we were going to bring in all these speakers and people to help with healing and all this, and what we fickle found was that these warriors are warriors. I mean, they don't want to sit around a bunch of, you know, talking about stuff, they want to go out and they want to do stuff. And so when you see the list of the things that Jeff's made available to them, that's, that's what the personnel have chosen, that's because that's what they're interested in. They don't want to sit in a seminar and talk about feelings, they want to get up and jump out of an airplane.
Oh, what's funny is the Navy added their Caregivers Conference to it this year, we put it down with the hotels, so they're, everybody, you know, even the militaries. And I forgot to mention Deputy Secretary, Deputy Assistant Secretary of Defense Rodriguez was down here also, so DOD wants to play a larger role, you know, I'll have to be cautious of that, you know, with the, but they, you know, but they're very aware of what we're doing down here and what the city has to offer, so. And my intention is to make it, is to keep, just keep on to make it, make it the center of excellence for what we're doing because it ties right into what's going over at Camp Grom also. And that's the reason we brought James Rodriguez down there was not only to see this and participate, because he's a wounded warrior himself, but also to go over and see what kind of DOD support we can get for Camp Grom also. So we want to make it the, the primary place for our men and women to heal, you know, and hopefully we can keep expanding it from just a week-long event and make it, you know, expand it out as much as we can, make it a year-round kind of thing.
Well, John and Rosemary and everybody that's been involved with us over the years, I would just say it's our honor to have these wonderful people that, you know, have given so much. And we take great pride in. And, um, we take great pride in this and it's part of what makes Virginia Beach your greatest city in the world. It really is.
I haven't left. All right, thank you, everybody. Yeah.
It was great to meet you.
Thanks very much.
All right, you want to go over this thing, Dave, about the PDC governance? That is just terrific stuff. That is terrific stuff.
Sir, I can't, members of council, I can't remember that we ever gave you a briefing on, uh, what is the PDC? And, and now then that, uh, we're, uh, got a one-year-in-place executive director back here, I'd like to introduce Bob Crum. Bob, uh.
Glad to have you here.
Just, uh, he's joining us today on his, uh, first day back to work on his one-year anniversary. So welcome, Bob, and thanks for being here. Uh, I was very fortunate to have been appointed by you all the beginning of the year and that was about the time that, uh, Bob had gotten all the, uh, chief appointed officers from the counties and cities together to create a CAO meeting. And meeting, uh, commences the first Wednesday of every month and, and we, uh, hide away in different cities and we come together over, uh, over a plate of beans and talk about things that are germane to each of us and issues that we're all facing. And, and we thought that maybe this organization, the CAO meeting would, uh, would also be a, be able to be, uh, more helpful to the regional planning efforts that we have. So that's kind of a lead-in. I thought I would just give you some quick background, uh, so that those that aren't aware of what the, uh, Planning District Commission is, uh, it's one of 21 and throughout the Commonwealth. And we have 17 local jurisdictions that are a member of the, of our Hampton Roads Planning District. You can see that we were created in 69 through that Development Act and, uh, we were formed by the merger of both the Southeast, South Side and the Peninsula Planning District Commissions. There are currently 47 members in the commission and that, that in itself creates, uh, some, some, uh, some difficulty for an executive director to corral, but it's also tough to get a lot of things done in a meaningful way during the brief periods that we meet on a monthly basis. There is an executive committee that provides policy oversight and, uh, you can see that, uh, the executive director manages over 40 people. And these are the current officers, just had a change in the, uh, in the chair and the vice chair and Marcus Jones, the city manager in Norfolk serves as the treasurer. And you met Bob just a minute ago. So I thought I'd give you a list of who's on it, just in case you hadn't had it and you'll, you have a handout with you in case that comes back to you and you get a chance to look at it. And, uh, just a second to glance at these. The asterisk represents the executive committee members as they stand today. And then, uh, these are your members, uh, from the city of Virginia Beach. And so what are the changes that are being proposed, uh, that were, uh, originally discussed and recommended to the, uh, to the commission, uh, from the CAO committee? And then we had in April our HR PDC retreat. And during that retreat, it was discussed at the various work tables that were there. And so this, uh, these changes are coming forward, uh, for a discussion and potential support in the July meeting. And, uh, thought it important enough that we ought to have that discussion here with the city council. We'd be moving from, uh, 47 members to one each, uh, as a direct appointee from the various jurisdictions, uh, to make 17 members. There would be a first alternate, uh, that would also be designated. My vision is that those two, of course, are elected officials from the various jurisdictions. And then the second alternative, alternate, excuse me, would be the city, city manager of the jurisdiction to be there at each of the meetings to support, to explain and prepare the, the, uh, the primary representative to the commission, uh, in the performance of the discussions and, and votes. It would be a weighted voting, should that be necessary. However, there is, uh, on most occasions consensus building in this organization and they get to the, to a common good on that. The second item that they're requesting change is to formalize this, uh, this process that, uh, we have with the, uh, with the CAO committee and, and, and give the CAOs an opportunity to work with the executive director to try and get agendas put together that are meaningful and to provide assistance to him with inputs, et cetera, so that there's a more meaningful topic, uh, topics, uh, placed on the agenda for the weekly meetings. And then the third, uh, change that they're presenting is, uh, they'll maintain the Personnel and Budget Committee, but, uh, that last bullet down there that, uh, two CAOs, as recommended by the CAO committee, uh, would be, uh, serving on that committee. And that's slightly different. So, uh, the next steps are that, uh, uh, I believe Mr. Crum will be presenting the required charter, uh, agreement and bylaw changes at the July meeting. And, uh, to talk about how that is approved, it requires two-thirds, uh, of a vote to, to get these bylaws and changes. And then we'd move through the process and get it in effect sometime between September and December and then take effect in January. So what we're pushing towards you today is, do you want to move forward with a change in the membership and, uh, the weighted voting that that would, uh, bring forward?
This is what's proposed?
Yes.
I guess I'd ask representatives of it, that serve for us, what they want to do.
Well, I'll comment. I guess I probably was, was more in the group when we had the retreat at my table saying, you know, I really kind of see a downside, I guess for Virginia Beach more than anybody else. We usually have five of us who are usually there and it's, you know, even though most of them are executive committee, executive meetings and, you know, there's not a vote, but knowing that you are appointed to the committee, it still is a reason to be there and sit around the table and represent the city. Um, and, uh, you know, I find it valuable, I think, to have fewer of us there will probably be detrimental because it's not just the voting that's important to be there, but it's the knowledge of what is going on in the region that I found very helpful. But, uh, clearly we were not, uh, I mean, when, when you are looking at the number of, uh, smaller jurisdictions, you know, they were very much in favor of it. But, you know, I, I, I see that, um, you know, it would be, um, that, that thing, that just the loss of the, the knowledge and, and of course having the, you know, the strength of having several people there because I think some of the cities that do have more than one or two, uh, are, are maybe not there as strongly as Virginia Beach is, but I think Virginia Beach usually has strong representation.
Any other comments?
I agree.
Yeah, I, I agree with Barbara. You know, I think, you know, on a lot of boards and commissions that we're on, you know, we are the largest city and I think we have, should have the weighted representation, you know, that should come with that. So I agree with Barbara.
Other comments, Millie?
So do I. I think it's important. We are the largest city in the entire Commonwealth.
Louis, you got any thoughts on it?
I could go either way, but I do think there's value in having, uh, several of our council members there in that they get to, to hear all of the information that's presented and they get, they get a, uh, they have more knowledge of the issues such as the TMDL issue, uh, and so forth. And, uh, it, I think there's value in having more than just one member sitting there, uh, from the former council.
Well, that's going to be my position then.
Voices around.
And I would encourage the council to be in attendance in July as there'll probably be a roll call vote with regards to this and you'll need, you'll need to weigh in with your, with your weight, uh, if that's your choice.
Very good. Thank you for the information.
Yes, sir.
And John, I know you're struggling to be here, we're glad to see you.
This anesthesia has worn off for the most part, I hope.
Okay, well, I, we're, we're sorry this year, not feeling well. Okay, um, any liaison reports?
You drove with anesthesia?
My wife drove me here.
Okay. Sorry. I just heard anesthesia and got a little concerned, sorry.
Any liaison reports?
I guess.
Yes, ma'am.
Beaches and Waterways. As you know, Beaches and Waterways has been studying the event houses and the Airbnb issue. And I think that they felt like this, this, they're kind of on a roll on the event houses and are moving forward with that, but I think that they have found that the Airbnb is just a lot harder for them to get their arms around. And they're, would like to see if we would consider, um, passing this issue on to another group. And we sat down and we talked, uh, with Mark Stiles and, you know, we could say, no, we still want you to do it, Beaches and Waterways, which is probably not a good thing to do. Or, um, we could send it to planning, but Mark says that planning's probably not the best place to send it either because there's a, the things that you're going to have to do for Airbnb, uh, planning is, and zoning ordinance is not probably the best. Or we could do an ad hoc committee and, um, or we can just wait and see what the state does. So I think when Will and Mark and Dave and I talked about it, we were thinking that an ad hoc committee, so that we are in front of this, you know, it's huge and it's getting bigger and bigger and, um.
Okay, Ben and then Shannon?
I, I completely agree with Rosemary. I think that Beaches and Waterways has done a tremendous job working on.
I think we put them in overload with this.
Well, I think it's way outside of their scope. Um, and so from that standpoint, um, I think an ad hoc committee does make sense here.
Other questions or comments? Shannon, then John.
I was just going to say Bobby's got his process improvement committee that looks at all the processes for most things. Would that be something we could spun over? I don't know.
Good point. Uh, John?
When does the state report? I know it reports back before the Journal Assembly, but is it actually December 31st?
But didn't you say six months?
Yeah, I think it's December.
December.
But we sort of feel like it's better to be in front of this and then if there's any recommendations that we can get to the state committee.
My question wasn't so much that we shouldn't do both, but were they having any, uh, discussions and is there any interim products or any meetings since I, hopefully there's open meeting laws? Is there any product out of their stuff that we could get the benefit of is what I was actually after, not so much, I don't think this is a good idea, I just looking for.
Bob Mathias has been going, I think they had a meeting in May and they're supposed to have another meeting in July.
I would suggest to you that I think maybe in our conversation, the ad hoc committee being established, getting that information and also providing conversation with our legislators as well at the same time would be of benefit. And I've kind of, I think we've left it to, for Mark and Dave to kind of think through the, how this ad hoc committee should be put together, um, with us and get something back to council as soon as we can. Johnny?
I would agree. I, you know, probably the city of Virginia Beach is probably most impacted by Airbnb issues than any other municipality in the state. And, you know, I don't know that, you know, the state is really waiting, you know, what it is that, that we may say on that committee as much as, as probably ought to be there. So I mean, at some point in time it'd be nice if the council could come up with a, you know, some type of a statement and, and a position that, that we could share with it. Because I think, you know, we, we are going to be the most impacted municipality and, uh, and I don't think that that's really being considered, at least today.
I was saying, uh, my youngest star's getting married next week and the, you know, I expected, you know, her friends to be using Airbnb, but guess what? Our friends are using Airbnb and finding, because you guys are so expensive down there, John, you know, at this time of year, you know, they're just, you know, getting some for half the price and I, it just blew my mind. It really did.
Well, you may not have a smoke detector or you might have life safety store insurance or a lot of other things.
And don't think that I don't know that and you're exactly right, but it does, but then that blow your mind, what I just said. And it's here to stay, folks, too. It's here.
It's growing.
Yeah.
My last thing, has anyone, since we paid these expensive subscription membership fees to National League of Cities and Israel League, has anyone done any abstract research to get the current body of what actually has been adopted, if anything, anywhere? And, because I think that would be interesting to know is just, has anyplace else actually adopted, issued a report? Because we can't be the first people working on that across the country.
Well, we're not, I did ask when we had our meeting that we start the research right now and Bob's got something.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, San Francisco, New York City and Chicago have adopted pretty wide-ranging ordinances. San Francisco is if Airbnb property is not listed with the city of San Francisco, they get fined a thousand dollars a day. They passed that about two weeks ago. It's on the fast track to court. I figure that that will eventually go to the Supreme Court. New York and Chicago have done something very similar. In Virginia, Charlottesville has somewhat of an ordinance, um, dealing with Airbnb and historic residences and things like that. We've been working very closely with Commissioner Kellum, uh, talked to him today. He actually did some research through a website and found that there were 1,400 discreet residences for rent in the city of Virginia Beach under Airbnb or 15 other platforms. It's not just Airbnb, by the way. HomeAway, for instance, is owned by Expedia, uh, so they've got a lot of money involved. So there were 1,400 residents, uh, for rent, uh, one week in June. So this is a big issue. We think we're losing perhaps a million dollars a year in revenue, uh, at least. Plus, uh, I've been saying and, uh, that the health, safety and welfare issues are perhaps even more important.
That is the most important.
Yeah.
I got to tell you, I think the biggest issue frankly is if, these are houses in people's neighborhoods and, you know, it depends upon where you live, but, you know, at least where I moved in, I didn't move in to have my next door neighbor rent their house out by the night or by the week. And, and I imagine that, that's the way it is with, with quite a number of them. I mean, if, if you're going to live in an area that is, that's more commercial, more urban, which, which you certainly can do in, in Virginia Beach, I mean, that's the beauty of the city. You can live all sorts of different places, then you expect that. But, um, you know, the, the complaints I've, I've been getting have not been, you know, they're not paying their taxes or anything. It's, there's people coming and going all hours of the day and night.
Parking.
Every single week.
Noise.
And, you know, can't you do something about it, kind of thing.
Well, we're going to figure this out.
Certainly they should be paying their fair share. I agree with John, you know, they're, they're, they're basically an unfair competitor if they're not held to the same standards for insurance and life safety and that sort of thing, but that, that's a whole separate issue, but.
Well, it's good y'all get to deal with some parking stuff too now.
Well, folks, we, it is a serious issue and we're going to figure it out, okay?
With Beaches and Waterways, I mean, we did have some speakers come forward and, who are the neighbors of these Airbnb, and, and we're using that as a generic term. And they're very upset. This is, just like what Jim, this is not what they expected when they bought their dream house, is to be having these rentals coming in and out. And there's just, there is absolutely no oversight whatsoever.
Okay, any other liaison reports? Yes, ma'am?
Well, just a little bright spot at least, they, um, I went to our Kemsville Advisory Council meeting and they're pleased to see the new colonial lights coming up, the LED along Singleton. And, uh, Kemsville Magnet that's being worked by Pope, he should have an open house soon for the end of this month. They're going to have an area in there for artifacts or at least video of the historic and a lot of the, uh, those who have, you know, been through there are bringing out some of their treasures, so will have somewhere to put in there too. So they're pleased.
Any other questions or any other liaison? How about comments, any comments? Bobby?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a minute to thank members of council, the staff and, uh, friends, you know, with my mom's passing, you know, how much people got behind me. A special shout-out to Lewis Jones and the professionalism and Holloman Brown. What made a very sad time, uh, Ms. Anna was given a great send-off because of friends and family and the rallying that people did around me and my family. And I just want to give you my sincere thanks.
Well, on behalf of the entire council, we continue to extend our deepest sympathy to you and your family. Thank you all very much. John Moss and then Barbara.
This deals, I mean, we'll call back, the staff came and briefed us on our tree canopy
This deals, you may recall back, the staff came and briefed us on our tree canopy forestry management program. And as we look to renovate and do, we renovate parking spaces and do redevelopment to try to move away from the cookie cutter green spaces and get bigger green spaces to put trees in so we have a bigger effect, even though it might not be as sporadic, but the concentration of space would be a bigger benefit. And so, and this is an item that's on our agenda today, is a big parcel of property with a lot of trees waiting for you to go buy it, but when you look at the actual subdivision, the actual development of the parking lot, it's the very thing that we said we didn't want to do. It's the standard, you know, four or five square feet here, four or five square feet here, four or five square feet here. Now, realize it was just a plan, it's not a prescriptive policy, but if we can't find a way on a parcel as big as that to try to accomplish some of our policy objectives, and I think we need to revisit the policy itself and see what about it failed us because we couldn't achieve it on this particular type of parcel which is sizable. Or maybe it's a policy that's promising more than we can achieve and we need to tone down our ambition, but there is definitely a disconnect. And when I engage the staff about it, because there's no analysis of that policy when you look through the staff assessment, there's no reference to our policy and how it impacts that site, but there's definitely a misalignment. Now, is that the fault of the developer? It's absolutely not, because it's not a prescriptive policy. But we don't have many parcels of land left that are like that in the city, as you will notice, especially in the northern part. And if we can't achieve it there, where can we achieve it? So I just point that I'd like the staff to come back and tell us, why is it that we couldn't achieve any of those policy objectives on that parcel? And what does that tell us as lessons learned going forward, what we might expect? And maybe our goals are too ambitious.
Thank you, Barbara.
I want to thank the city manager and all of the staff that made their way down to Blackwater last Wednesday evening for, I guess, the first ever town hall for Blackwater. They have a place now that they can have such a meeting with the new Blackwater Fire Station and it was a very good discussion. Of course, it was sort of precipitated by some concerns that they have for public safety, but not only were the public safety folks there in force to answer questions and provide assurances that Blackwater is very much part of the city and deserves the same kind of services that the rest of the city has, but we also had other folks representing their public works and parks and rec and agriculture and so forth. And I think it was a very good way to let that part of the city know that they are a part of the city and I appreciate very much everybody coming out and driving all of that way down there. Appreciate it a lot.
Very good. Any more comments? Yes, ma'am?
Barbara isn't mentioning what happened July 4th.
Oh, yes, of course. I know you played for the Senior Resource Center, July 4th celebration again yesterday. If you didn't make it this year, I hope you'll put it on your calendar for next year. It's always a really good, good event. We have a pretty big crowd.
And homemade ice cream and we're getting a band. We had a harmonica player and who else? Guitar player, so it was really, we had a great time.
Homemade ice cream.
Ooh, the ice cream good.
Oh, good. Straw, what is it? Blueberry, banana, blackberry and strawberry. It's worth coming out.
Okay.
Worth coming out.
We'll now move on to the consent agenda and, council, I'm going to suggest here I take the one consent. Everybody okay? And you got a no vote on the ARP? Are you abstaining on why? He was voting no on ARP.
I voted no on ARP, which is not inconsistent with what I did. I don't remember seeing any of the resources or Exxon on the agenda. And though I'm not happy with the Old Dominion thing, it's not their issue, it's ours, so I'm going to vote yes, but it's with some reluctance. Not their fault.
The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings announced by section 2.2-3711A, code of Virginia, as for filing purposes, public contract, discussion of award of a public contract involving expenditures of public funds and discussion of the terms for scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to section 2.2-3711A29, arena for protest amendments to development group. Perspective business for industry, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the communities pursuant to section 2.2-3711A5, Beach District. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the following body or consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of a legal advice by such counsel pursuant to section 2.2-3711A7, a state of Doris Baxter, request for appointment of counsel pursuant to section 58.1-3376. Personnel matters, discussion, consideration of or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees pursuant to section 2.2-3711A1, council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, units, and appointments. Do I have a motion? Hold on.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye. Their last. Aye. Okay, the first thing we're going to talk-